We, regular schedule of June council meeting to order. We'll start in our normal fashion by welcoming all of our guests, visitors, and citizens. Everyone tuning in via Facebook Live, thank you so much for tuning into the meeting and coming in tonight. All of our council, I'm sorry if I say council members, all of our department heads are back tonight. We kept them away because of COVID. They were all itching and excited to be here tonight, so good to see all of y'all. So, we'll start with opening prayer. We ask Mr. Walker to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge to the flag.
Father, again, we thank you for the day. I thank you, Father, that we can gather together to take care of the business of the city. And I pray for the council members, the mayors, to make decisions, you give them wisdom. Father, we pray for those in our city that are sick. We ask for healing and comfort and strength. We just pray these things in your name, for your sake. Amen.
Pledge the flag, Lee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice. If you would, Ms. Clerk, call it a roll.
Mr. Crawford.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dowd.
Here.
Mr. Joel.
Here.
Mr. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Ute.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Stane.
Here.
Here.
Here. We have one set of minutes to approve, minutes from the May council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? If not, if you would, cast your vote, please. Sorry, I need a motion, I'm sorry. Is there, can I have a motion to approve, Mr. Joyce, second, is there a second? Second by Mr. Crawford. All in favor, cast your votes, please. Don't think it's up.
No, give me a second to get it rolling.
We have technical difficulties, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carry. We'll, we'll pick up with Mr. Mick when he get loaded up there. Under my report, first, I want to say thank you personally for all the prayers during the sickness of my wife. It's last week or two. Thank y'all for all the calls, the text messages. Sheila told me about all the messages everyone was sending. And I thank the community, all the prayers, all the food, all, it's everything. Just thank you guys so much. She is doing a whole lot better. So, just want to say thank you for all the love and kindness you guys showed us. And also, I wish her a happy birthday, yesterday was her birthday. Say happy birthday to her. And today is my number three son's birthday, Jackson, so happy third birthday to him. So, but again, like I said, personally, thank you guys so much, means, means a lot to us. Under, also under my report, want to invite all the council members, as well as the community, out to our unity prayer breakfast on Wednesday. Hosting this breakfast, we have a prayer breakfast, just basically want to bring our community together and just ask God for his grace and covering over our city and our county, as well as our just entire country. Mayor Ross from Brownsville will be speaking, a couple of other ministers and different people in the community will be praying. We'll have a breakfast also, so at seven thirty, if you can attend. I know a lot of you guys have already told me that you can't because of work and other things like that, but everyone is encouraged to come out if you can. July first, want to let everyone know we'll be doing the swearing in for the new council members. We will have that meeting at twelve, so please, council members, make sure you're here. And if you can't be here, please let myself or Ms. Sheila know, so we can make sure. We have to have a call, because this will actually be a meeting for the swearing in of the new council members on July first, at twelve noon here. On July second, if you guys follow us on social media, Channel Seven came and did a big story earlier today. I think that came out at five, I think. But, we're excited to have the official opening for Sand Beach Lake, along with a fireworks show sponsored, co-sponsored by the city, as well as a Devco. Devco sponsoring the fireworks show, and we have a lot of big things planned for that night. So, encourage you guys, if you can come out July the second, at seven, seven, right? I think you got a flyer, I keep saying seven thirty, but seven o'clock at the lake. All the guys, we have a department head meeting today, and all the employees are coming together, working. Curtis and his team has done a great job, but everyone else that has came out to help, we'll say thank you to them. So, looking forward to it. Having, gonna have free food, so we're gonna buy enough to make sure we don't run out. So, make sure everybody come out and help us celebrate the opening of the lake and Independence Day. But, also, we got two new hires that want to welcome tonight to our council meeting. Ms. Carey Beth will be taking the place of Ms. Sheila as our new clerk and recorder. And also, Mr. Anthony, I say, I said, I was, I said in my head to make sure I say Anthony. I said it in, anyway, Anthony Ford will be taking on the role as our activities director. So, as you guys know, Curtis will be retiring back spring sometime, so we went on and brought somebody in to take part of this, his task, off, and he can get trained while Curtis is still here. So, Anthony worked with us a few years in the past, so he's gonna follow that role there pretty, pretty well. And Ms. Carey Beth was the assistant at Fayette County, Fayette County Mayor, so she's excited to be back home helping her, her city out here. So, we say welcome to, to the city, and happy to have you guys on our team. All right, now, we, I would like to take this time to recognize councilwoman, Ms. Joyce Woods, and councilman, Mr. Jonathan Joy. They both have served us well. I have personally enjoyed serving with both of them. We have a little presentation here on behalf of the city. I'll read this, I don't know if you, do I need to, we need to go down there? I guess we can do that in a minute. This says, "Thank you for your dedication service of four years on the Bolivar City Council. We appreciate your hard work and loyalty to the citizens of Bolivar." Presented to Jonathan Joy, and also, Ms. Joyce, read the same thing, Mayor Julian McTidlick, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Just want to say thank you so much for stepping up and serving your community, and look forward to having some more great things from both of you guys. And, like I said, I personally enjoy serving with both of you, so I guess I could take this out and say, "Thank, thank you guys, Mr. Joy, and thank you, Ms. Woods." Yeah, let's come down here and take a picture.
Jonathan, obviously, knew you were taking a picture out here.
I know, I knew. I knew the mayor loved to take pictures.
Mr. Joy, appreciate you. Yeah, let's just thank you.
Thank you.
You, you gonna stand over here.
No, you gonna stay in the middle.
Okay, y'all tell me to do it, I'm just gonna stand there and smile.
I can tell you nothing.
So, I'll tell them, let them, let them know.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
And I found out she told you. We got a little something here for Ms. Sheila Dilger. After forty-four years, this is her last council meeting. So, want to say thank you for the time and the service you spent in the city of Bolivar. You will be missed. Her last day is June thirtieth, I think, officially. June twenty-fourth, at two o'clock, from two to four, we're having just a little small reception over here in her honor. She didn't want anything big, she don't know it, but I've invited a whole lot of people, so it's probably gonna be bigger than what she thinks, so she'll be all right. But, just say, "Thank you, Ms. Sheila, we appreciate your hard work to the city, and wish you well on your retirement, and enjoy your time with Clyde and everybody else you're gonna be hanging out with." So, this is just a little something here, hold on. From the city council, and we got a card, and I don't know where I put it. Okay, here we go. I say, "We got, I'll give you the card when I find it, here we go." Thank you so much, Ms. Sheila, you will be, you will be missed, so. Now, this is from our council, so.
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Oh, it's just a plate, it ain't nothing else. All right. Now, we have the accept a bid for Hayes-Harner Sons Construction in the amount of sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. What this is, if you guys are familiar with the United Sons and Daughters Charity Building, off of, is that off of South Water Street down there? So, if you guys are familiar with that, they are oldest school here, the first African-American school here in the county, and that has been in dire need of some repair maintenance through the help of Ms. Kathy and the board there. They have been able to get a grant to start on the repairs, to hopefully get that up and going, and we can preserve our history down there. So, this money here is from the grant from USDC. The bid approval, we just need the council to approve this bid there. The Hayes-Harner Construction was the low bid on, on that, and I just need a, a motion to approve the sixty-four eight hundred.
I make a motion that we approve the bid on this USDC building.
Give us a second.
I have a motion and a second. If you will, cast your votes. Okay, motion carry, you got a new screen there. All right, also, there'll be a five K round for that. They are still raising funds. This is a matching grant, so whatever support that the organization can get, I know they will appreciate it. Mr. Woods is a part of that committee there, so thank you guys for everything that y'all doing. We look forward to working to try to make sure we can preserve that, that building there. All right, now, that's all under my report. Under, we'll start off with the standing committee reports, the electric board. Let me get to it. I got a lot, thank you, I got a lot of papers up here. Ball Energy Board met May twenty-seventh, regular meeting. To approve the electric vehicle rate, the EV rate will be for any vehicle charging stations installed September first, twenty twenty-one. VA is proactive and preparing for electric vehicles. And they also passed the twenty twenty-two, twenty, the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. That completes the electric report. Under utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Just real quickly here, I've got a couple of items here, we'll go over, I think, just in your packet. First one is, the county highway department has decided to change out a culvert from Old Highway Sixty-four between Bolivar and Wable. When we installed those lines years ago, they were put on state right of way. So, we have the task of moving them, so they can do their construction. And we have Mr. Robert Stegall taking care of the bidding on that, so we should be able to open up bids for this construction. Hopefully, July the fourteenth, I think, is when the utility board's gonna meet again. So, we'll open those bids and then bring them to council for final approval. Next item is, the utility board met last Wednesday, and they approved the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two utility budget and had made recommendation for council approval on that. So, if y'all, I think y'all had a copy of that. If you have any questions, you can contact me, but they did pass that on for y'all's approval. And the last item is, gas prices for June is still sixty-five cents per hundred cubic foot. And one thing I want to add, we, we added Hatchet Hardwood as a gas customer last month. They have come online, and we're doing real well with this. It was an investment we made in bringing them online, and their first month bill is around eleven thousand dollars. So, that's a good summer load for us, and we're real grateful that that all come about.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Next, fire department, Mr. Chief Price.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilman Joy, we really gonna miss you. Council would, thank you all for the service, too. Definitely appreciate you guys. My total fire call, we had thirteen fire calls, we had eight in the city, five in the county. Thank God we didn't have a structured fire in the city of Bolivar last month. Training hour, we had two hundred and thirty-four training hours, smoke alarm, we installed fifteen. Pre-Curtis inspection, eight. We just started back doing our Curtis inspection. We getting ready, hopefully, to maybe July fifteenth, we're gonna start back to doing all you alarm. That's our campaign, that we want to make sure we got smoke alarm in every home in the city of Bolivar. We almost have done. With COVID, it shut us down, because we weren't going into people home, but we halfway there, so we want to start that back up July fifteenth, getting smoke alarm in everybody home. They don't have any, or they got some old, and over ten years old. You know, when they ten years old, they need to come out, put new ones up. Also, want to say that our volunteer firefighter for the event down at Sand Beach Lake gonna be selling T-shirts. The T-shirt's gonna be twelve dollars. And for this special event, guys, this gonna be a one-time T-shirt sale for the event. They, we not gonna make them anymore, so we gonna make, have about a hundred and thirty. Once they gone, they gonna be gone, so if you, I want all the councilmen to purchase one, so.
Put me down.
Sir?
Two X.
Two X. Okay, I'll put you down two X, okay? But, that's my report. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Next, police, Chief Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My report is as follows. We've had eight hundred and forty-one calls of service, two hundred and seventy-six citations. We've had sixteen, fifteen accidents, two of them were injuries, thirteen were property damage. We had thirty juvenile arrests, thirty arrests, I'm sorry, six were juvenile, twenty-four adults. Special events were seven DUI saturations, and we've had training hours of three hundred and twenty hours. We've also applied for a grant that we received through the police department. It's to Keep Tennessee Beautiful. We're working with the sheriff's department and the court system. We're getting community service workers, and grants gonna pay overtime for the officers to be out there with them on the road and guarding while they pick up. So, we're trying to schedule different parts of the city to pick up, and also try to get to clean up other things, but juvenile courts, and I was supposed to be working with the sheriff. So, we got money to cover it, so that's our next phase, but it's a grant through the state of Tennessee that we applied for.
All right, we got bid opening for repairs on the police department over there. I'm sorry.
I thought she was gonna ask me something. Okay.
All right, we got two, two, two bids here. This is, was this the one that we're taking out the fund balance, or we got the insurance job?
That right there is gonna be the fund balance. Our building has damaged from where the wind has pulled the old siding down from years ago, so we had to get bids on it, and the gutters also has to be replaced. We also had some damage to the roof, but the insurance is gonna cover the damage to the roof.
This is from Economy Siding and Windows, eleven thousand two eighty. Economy siding and windows. This is from Moore Roofing and Construction. This one is eleven thousand two eighty. That's the first time that ever happened.
I'm gonna say go with the lowest bid, both of them.
Are they doing the whole building?
Yes, sir, they're gonna do the whole building.
Removal.
Now, the roof's gonna be just the patchwork, but it's gonna be the gutters and the siding all the way around the building. The insurance paying for the roof, yes, but the gutters, we have to pay for.
This is exactly the same.
Which one is home?
I think it's Moore.
Economy's out of Jackson and.
No, no, I don't think neither one of them from, well.
That's Jackson, oh, there.
I think one's out of Jackson, others from Hardeman County.
Moore? Jonathan Moore.
Moore's Hardeman County.
Is that the Jonathan, JD?
Yeah, I thought that's JD's.
That ain't JD.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay.
Well, I go with Mr. Moore.
I make a motion.
This one is from Pocahontas.
Pocahontas, okay, that's good.
Pocahontas.
I go with.
Which one was Pocahontas, the more?
The more.
Okay.
I make a motion with Mr. Moore.
Eleven thousand.
Since he's local.
Eleven thousand. Hold on, wait a minute. There we go, let's do it. This one says eleven thousand two eighty. Oh, no, they are the same, they just wrote it the, so, sorry. We got a motion and a second for Mr. Moore Roofing. Any other question, if I call the roll? I'm sorry, cast your vote. Yeah, this one's probably have. What happened, everybody cast your vote? Oh, motion carry, here you go, Sheila. Next, we have Parks and Rec, Mr. Stack.
Mayor and council.
I'm sorry, Parks, not Recreation, just Parks. He keeps reminding me of it.
We continue work at Sand Beach Lake and hope to finish installing utilities this month. A and W finished laying the asphalt, and we're preparing to lay sod, construct the volleyball court, and also, we're preparing for the big event you guys need to come to. We're gonna blow up a lot of fireworks.
Yep, it's gonna be a good, good time. Thank you, Mr. Stack.
Have a bid opening also.
Yes, we have a bid opening on the pool roof, pool building in the, um, the pump house, is that what we call it again?
Yeah, the roof was put on in ninety-four, so it's.
All right, this one is from Cameron Cliff. I'd say it's a lot of repairs we gotta get done out there on the pool. We're working, trying to find some grant money to do it. It may be a thing we just got to do out the fund balance, but, I don't know. It's a lot of, lot of work needs to be done. All right, this is Roof Repair Labor Pool and Pump House, eleven thousand four hundred and fifty, from Mr. Cliff.
And we're gonna go back with ten on that also.
Ten, okay, back with.
Back with ten, so shame.
Eleven thousand four fifty. This is from C and C Home Remodeling, nineteen thousand nine sixty-nine forty.
Nineteen nine sixty-one?
Yes, I don't have the specs in front of me. Do you know the square footage of, I don't have it, it was in the specs, though.
I let them do that. I let them do the square footage, we just want the roof put on gray.
Nineteen thousand nine sixty-nine forty.
I designated the gauge of the ten, but not square footage.
This is from EU Roof, EU Roof, from Mr. Wayne Crisp. Thirteen thousand one fifty-three twenty-four. Thirteen thousand one fifty-three twenty-four. Thought I had another one. Last one here is from Hayes-Harner. This one is fifteen thousand four eighty-two. Fifteen thousand four eighty-two. And all these are local guys, too. Any questions on any of that?
Who was that eleven thousand, who was that?
Cameron Cliff. We'll check all that, if we, if he get the bid, he have to present all that stuff, too. I don't, I didn't, we don't do that part till we get, Mike, do you know if he got a? I don't think he has to have a contract, like, he just have to be bonded and all this stuff.
I make a motion, go with the lowest bidder then.
All right, got a motion for Mr. Cliff for eleven thousand four fifty.
Not second.
Motion on the second, if you will, cast your vote. Motion carry.
Concludes my report.
Um, Ms. Sheila, here you go. Oh, sorry. Next, we have activities, Mr. Anthony Ford. I'm sorry, I'm taking up.
Mayor, council, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My report, our eleven, eleven through fourteen-year-old summer basketball league has picked up, and this is resumed from the COVID shutdown. It started on this past Thursday, June the tenth, and there are four teams participating with forty players. The city's summer basketball league for ages fifteen through eighteen signups, they're currently going on, and they'll end on the eighteenth. We're having our first adult kickball tournament, and it will be on July tenth at six thirty on the Middle Field at West Park. And also, one of our newer recreational activities we're bringing is our Intro to Tennis for Youth Camp. This will be on July seventeenth at the high school tennis courts, and ages five through eight. That'll be the first hour, and nine through twelve will be second. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. See, that one, that one hard at all, was it? Made it through the first. Not too. Waiting on Larry to say something over here. You made it.
Doing a good job, yeah. Good, nothing bad.
You won that night with Curtis. Come on, uh.
And Curtis go way back.
It is not here, so Mr. Ford, uh, is here.
Did he even ask you, was that in my bag?
No, I sure did, yeah. I started, it was on my body. I got that correct.
I just screened the sanitation. My report is, patchy potholes, bush hogging, grass, route, industrial park, picking up paper downtown area, trimming trees, long sidewalks, and trimming, trimming, picking up debris with the brush trim.
And I'll let them know the A and W, they're doing, how much left do you think they got? Have, they got all of them done, or they still got a couple more?
Uh, plenty, yes.
They still got, they're doing good so far, they probably halfway in, I guess, so. If you see the guys out there, got, they did all the lake out there, and they working, working through town now.
I'd like to, Mayor, that, um, the, I guess, your volunteer youth, they, I noticed they have been doing an excellent job by bringing the garbage can closer to the road, make sure they always turn, so the garbage truck can pick them up, and make sure no trash was on the road, so I commend them on that.
I'll talk about the summer workers, they, they getting paid, ain't volunteering.
Oh, okay.
No, they, they, they doing good. I think we got six.
Four.
Four, four of them, two of them went to football camp, or we lost one or two of them, but, yeah, they are doing, doing good. Ms. Ray helped us get, we went over to the school, and she was pulling them out left and right, putting the door. They was all grateful of it, yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Ford. Planning Commission, Mr. Golden.
Kalala Woods subdivision located seven oh seven North Naylor Street was approved, and the William Fincher subdivision located six twelve North Lovelace Street, with the exception of Lot Four, which is gonna have to meet the satisfaction of the city of Bolivar, then it will be approved.
Can I ask what these are, the subdivisions? I mean, is this new building, or new construction?
They are, it's a house, Kalala, they got a lot over there they bought from Mr. Nelson and split that up. I think they're gonna build like a little house over there. I think that's the one that she's doing. Same one on the William Fincher subdivision. You know, the house, this guy, his name is Tevin Coleman, they're doing, he did this house from my, over here behind the, the, over here behind the senior center? The house there, he remodeled that one, he remodeled a few on the Tate Road, and he has, so that's what they did. All right, thank you. Ms. Becky, library. All right, thank you. Ms. Becky, Library.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I have a report for the library. I also wanted to tell you guys before I get started, our, the revenue for this whole past year has been a lot lower due to the pandemic. We had to quarantine books for seventy-two hours. So we waived all new fees during the whole year. So that's why on your report, you saw a lot lower revenues. But we took in five hundred and ninety dollars and five cents for the month of May. We had a total of four virtual programs with one hundred and three participants. We had nine hundred and ninety-nine material circulation, two eighteen computer users, two thousand six hundred and fifty Wi-Fi users and five hundred and two reads. I also want to let you guys know that we will be closed this Wednesday and Thursday. I talked to Sheila about that earlier today. Our regional IT department is coming in to do all new cabling and wiring for our internet service, and that's provided by our tech grant from the state.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Historics on it, Ms. Ray?
We didn't meet this month.
Okay, compliance is on it.
You should have a copy of my report. Building consultations were six, building permits written three, building inspections three, plumbing inspections three, mechanical inspections two, courtesy notice is issued twenty. Attended the planning commission meeting on the seventeenth. Gonna give you a very quick update on a couple of things. The Christian Care Center should be opening sometime. They, they've announced, they were planning on the fifteenth of July, somewhere in that area, but they're opening at what they call a soft opening. I think they're being, that's being done by the government because they have to meet all their standards and everything. So they open with just a few residents before they can open fully. So I have done their final inspections, just a couple of odd and in things we got left to do out there as far as my part. Also, the house on five fourteen West Jackson Street has been demolished. The lot cleared, cleaned up, looks a lot better. Got a lot of compliments around town on it, and actually, the city didn't do it. The owners did that, went ahead and took care of it and got it down. There was another one, and I can't remember the name of the street. It's right at the end of Madison. It was an old duplex there, but it was torn down. I didn't know it was even being torn down. They tore it down and cleared the lot, and the owners did that as well. So, but anyway, things are kind of coming together. We got a lot of debris sitting around. I've been off for a couple of weeks, but I'm back and we'll start getting cleaned up quick as we can. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Watt.
Hello, Mr. Watt. Did you find out or do something with those auto cars at the end of wood there?
Have not yet. We working on.
You got a call today, still trying to get a removal.
Okay, all right. We still working on it. Do what I can, okay?
All right, on the main street, Devco, biggest thing to report for Devco, the fireworks show is being sponsored in collaboration with the city. I think we left a flyer on your desk. I think we did. Okay, if you got that there. Also, the, the board, uh, have three members that they're asking us to appoint. We'll be doing that on a new business and have started the process in updating the presentation to the governor as well as working on trying to do some development of some type of hotel downtown. So Devco's been doing pretty, working pretty hard here the last couple of months on trying to get things going that way. None under new, I'm sorry, nothing on the old business, moving to new business. The board appointments for Devco is Mr. Latasha Neely, Mr. Rashad Smith, Mr. Jeff Goss. If you don't have any, they, the Devco board asked us, asked me to present these three people to you all to add to the board. They all are excited about serving, so there is no objection to us taking all three. They've got the lady and gentleman at the same time, which I'll be in favor of that. They're motion to approve these three.
Make that motion.
I have a motion by Counselor Joyce, second, by Mr. Lau, in favor of those board appointments. All in favor, cash your votes. And note, we missing Ms. Carroll. Motion carried. Next, we have approval for card for Ms. Carroll, uh, ready for city clerk and recorder. So basically, just moving her, moving Sheila off and putting Ms. Carroll on the new card. They're motion for.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Joyce, they're second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McKenna Woods. All in favor, cash your votes. Motion carried. Next item, we have bid openings for new HVAC unit here at the community room. Uh, the unit, it's like six or seven units on this building, I think, and the one in the community room went out. We've started back to, I'll make that announcement. We started back opening, uh, we've opened the community room back up for rental, so you can let everyone know if they are interested in renting the community room that is now available to rent. First, first, uh, bid is from Superior Plumbing, eleven thousand four sixty-five for a one twelve and a half ton roof unit. And this is putting the same unit that's up there, back up there, eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-five. Next is Mr. Bobby Henderson, eleven thousand four fifty-seven. Eleven thousand four fifty-seven.
It's gonna be the same again for a second?
Probably was, I guess. He just cut his out about ten, fifteen dollars. Uh, one from Mr. Superior Plumbing and Heating, eleven thousand four sixty-five, and one from Henderson Heating and Air, eleven thousand four fifty-seven. Any questions? They're motion to approve one or?
Make a motion except for low bid.
All right. Motion by Mr. Lau to sub Henderson Heating and Air. Second by Mr. McKenna. Cash your votes, please. I'm sorry. Motion carried. Next, we have the approval of the charter changes. As you guys can remember, we did those charter changes, uh, to change the city administrator to a clerk and recorder and went through all that. We did get, okay, perfect. We just must got them back today then. Okay, Mr. Shaw, they did tell us we could go ahead and approve this, but we actually got them back and got everything from the legislators from Mr. Shaw and Senator Wally, got the charter changes approved. Now we have to approve it by two-thirds vote, and then it'll be enacted. So there is a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Joyce, second by Ms. Spink. Okay, second by Ms. Spinks. Cash Motion carried. For, next, we have the first reading of ordinance twenty-one zero zero one for fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one budget amendments. You guys got, Lisa put together a copy and explanation for all of the budget amendments from our last budget. Commend the guys, they did well. Everyone stayed in pretty much in budget. A lot of the stuff that happened was stuff out of our control with insurance and workers comp and stuff like that. So any questions on the budget amendments here? If not, is there a motion that we approve? Ordinance twenty-one zero zero, uh, one, the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Motion, Mr. Joyce, they're second. Second by Mr. Crawford. All, we will cash your votes. Motion carried. Next, we, first reading of ordinance twenty-one zero zero two, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Originally, we had this budget meeting set for last week. Of course, I wasn't able to be, I was at the hospital with my wife, so we rescheduled. And thank, uh, our budget committee, we was able to meet earlier here. I talked to a lot of you guys on the council. Me and Mr. McKenna spoke over the weekend and everything. Uh, he was fine with everything when we talked on the budget as well as all our budget committee members. For the most part, the budget is pretty much cut and dry. Couple of notes I will add on here. No first name, first question, Larry, but want to know with their property tax increase. We don't have any property tax increase. Do include a four percent cost of living raise to all the employees. Four percent cost of living raise along with also longevity included in this budget, as well as the new salary for the mayor and the newly elected council people. No increase in our health insurance this year, which is a plus. Usually, when we do a cost of living raise, the employees don't see it because the insurance goes up, but no increase in the insurance, same insurance there. Also, we did include some promotions for the police department. We have two or three gentlemen that's about to retire over there. So Mr. Mike wanted to start working on getting some guys not in that position yet, but moving them up into some management positions there, uh, in the police department. Those won't be done until later, towards the end of the year, but we went ahead and put it in the budget now. There's no, no capital outlay in this budget. We do have money from the federal government, COVID funds amounting about, I think it's one million, one million two hundred thousand, something like that. And also, about sixty-nine thousand that's coming from the, uh, it's coming from the state. What we did, we put that in the budget under the revenue side, and we put it out on the expenditures. Those have not been allotted to anything. And the reason why I wanted to have a few more meetings, we don't have to have those things put necessarily in this budget. We do have to have our budget approved and passed by June thirtieth. So what we're gonna do is have some more budget meetings next month or so to wait and find out for sure what the money on these grants can actually be spent on. What I didn't want to do is start buying stuff and spending money and doing things, and then the controller tells us that was a no-no. So we went to a meeting last week, a week before last. We did get some guidance from them on what it can be spent on, but we still just want to work through that process opposed to just coming in and having one meeting, just saying we're gonna spend it all on A, B, or C. Wanted us to have some more committee meetings and really just discuss thoroughly what we do with those funds. Also, we put the membership back in with NLC in as well as TML. We, you know, we got, we cut that last year because of COVID. We put that back in the budget this year. So those were a lot of the hot notes that we put on there. If there's any questions on any of the budgets, I know Lolly have already called me with your questions, but are there any more questions that anybody might have about anything? If not, we did get a positive recommendation from the budget committee for this. So if not, if there's, is there a motion to approve?
I make the approval.
I already got a motion, Mr. Joy. They're second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Golden. You will cash your vote. Motion carried. Next time, we'll need to set another meeting. We have to read this. Have two readings, so look at the calendar here and see what's a good meeting. I was looking at either the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth, but any, any opposition? Do you want to stay with a Monday? Is everybody good with the twenty-eighth?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Good with everybody?
On Monday.
Monday. The twenty-eighth, that's six.
You got energy at five, that should be out.
Okay, so we'll set that for our next council meeting. It'll be a special call council meeting on the twenty-eighth, and the purpose of that meeting will be to pass the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, and also the budget amendments. Everybody good with that? All right, anybody on community development, Ms. She? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Well, Ms. McKenna, second. Ms. Joyce, cash your votes and we'll see you guys in two weeks.
I'm getting up.
Oh, yeah.
All right, good.